Please, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in his will, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Folks have a chance to take a look at the council minutes for August 23rd, the special session, then on the 18th. I want to separate those to any who have an issue with the minutes on 23rd.
Move to approve.
Second. And those in favor of approving the minutes on 1/3rd, 75 on Thursday. Okay. Likewise, on August the 18th, do I have a motion for those minutes? Moved by Goodman, seconded by Garrett, those in favor accept the minutes. It's unanimous as well. Okay, I suspect most people are here over the golf cart issue, so we don't usually have this many show up. I figured there was a lot of interest in that. So what we're going to do is we're going to move that right up next on the list for our discussion. It's David Heide here.
Yes?
Are you?
Pardon?
Are you, come on down front, David. You're on the agenda for LMA.
Oh, okay.
The natural, we don't want this to, you know, rest out till midnight. So you're always on the agenda for LMA, so if you don't mind.
Sure, I was actually here for FedCo.
Oh, well. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you've got to choose one or the other. However, you're comfortable in presenting?
Since I didn't know I was presenting, I think it's clear that as we have our LMA meetings, public meetings, golf carts come up often. There's always questions about golf carts and how and what. And so when we were kind enough Ted to let me know this was going to be on the agenda, we had a meeting last week, so we just put out a blast saying, okay, we've asked before, do we talk, do, what do we do? And so we said the forum is here, you know, how you feel, one way or the other doesn't matter, but, you know, people have always been asking, so we said, here's the forum, show up if you have an opinion. So it looks like to me there's a lot of opinion. So I don't know which way the opinions sway, it's been clearly a lot of opinion.
Just as a struggle, how many of you out there own golf carts? So you're all breaking the law.
We can mix that with an ordinance.
Yeah, we can mix the product base with an ordinance. Okay, anything else you want to add to it?
Well, I think, from what I know about it, I think there's a strong advocacy for safe utilization. I think, you know, I think most of us have talked at one point or the other after the last few years that it's important that golf carts be set up right, you know, you need to be, you don't want a bunch of kids out driving golf carts on the street, so, you know, I think there needs to be good parameters and I think common sense, and we ought to find a way that we can make it work safely. Clearly, we're not breaking any new ground here. You travel a lot of places, there's a lot of places that utilize golf cart ordinances or have tags, so that there's an inspection annually, there's a P annually, and then there's a guideline for doing it. You know, clearly, if the room's full and that means your hands raised, to your point, Ted, golf carts are out there utilized. Three of us live on the same street, so it's no secret that I had one. So I think that's what, I don't want to speak for everyone because there's a lot of different opinions here, but I think what we want is something that makes sense and is safe and a guideline that we can work with together. And so that everybody knows what the rule is and be able to take advantage of that opportunity, whether it's the opportunity for electric vehicle or, you know, the lake community, the, you know, you go to a lot of communities that aren't lake communities now have golf cart ordinances and we'll get, how many communities?
I'm Cappy, and I live at 2420 Country Club South. Just in a 30-minute research session today, 72 cities and towns around this area, including nine counties that are county-wide, have ordinances regulating golf carts. The statute in Indiana is very clear that the city can do that, the county can do that, and that's a way to make riding, driving a golf cart around town safe, require seat belts, require turn signals, require headlights, tag them, make people register them and have them inspected. That's all we're asking, is that we have the opportunity to do that, so that we can do it legally on the streets and be safe and not allow kids driving it. It is required pursuant to statute that the ordinance would require that the drivers of the golf cart be of legal age, and I think that would be something that would help the entire community. So having this ordinance would do nothing but benefit the community by keeping things safe and doing things in a safe manner with the ordinance that would provide direction to the community. Not only 72 cities and towns, but I think it's also important to note that the counties surrounding here, Culver has an ordinance allowing golf carts, Winnemac, Bass Lake, Knox, the entire Stark County, Plymouth, all kinds of counties and residents around here allow this, and we're just asking the same opportunity that those people have.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I got.
My public safety chiefs, Tom and Andy, have opinions on this, and as you know, some of you may not know, this is the fourth time in 20 years this has come to the council. Now, some people were around back then, the first time it came up, some people were certainly around when it came up for the second time, but quite a few folks were around when it came up for the third time. Some of the things we face, I will let the chief address. Chief, would you like to take the floor?
Sure, that bus is awful heavy when it hits, when you get thrown under it, but I'll take it. Okay. As most of you know, it's not that I'm against you or the idea. I have no doubt that the majority of you in this room would operate it responsibly, but as a safety standpoint, I'm not in favor of golf carts, just not against any of you guys. It's just, in theory, it sounds great, but if all we had to do were pass laws and ordinances and everyone would follow the rules, right? It doesn't work that way. I've spoken with Wayne Bean, the chief of Culver. I had a conversation with him in mid-August, and quite frankly, in his words, he was fed up with golf carts. They have 576 registered in Culver. It's a $60 annual registration fee, it's all done through the clerk's office. They constantly have problems with people not following the rules. Basically, they pay for the registration sticker, they put the sticker on the golf cart, and they don't care what the rules are. They do whatever they want, they're continually getting complaints. And when I'd spoken with them, they were to a point where they'd written 30 tickets to golf carts in the last six weeks. It's just a point of contention for his department. I know they've been doing it a long time, and I know, I have no doubt that a majority of you people in here would follow the rules and do it responsibly, but it's, I don't want to see golf carts dropping kids off to school. I don't want to see 16-year-olds driving their golf carts to school because they're cheap, they're a cheap form of transportation, and mom and dad can afford that more than they can a car, or it's cheaper on gas. I don't want to see them going, driving down Main Street to go out on a Friday night and get behind three or four golf carts because people are cruising the streets in them. From a safety standpoint, it concerns me. If there were an accident, there's no protection in a golf cart. It's about like riding a scooter. The seat belts, I mean, you can buckle up and have all the lights and turn signals you want, but it's not going to protect you from a serious bodily injury if you get in an accident. It's about the same thing, yeah.
Correctly, and we have not written a citation for golf carts.
Not, not in the last five years that I remember. I mean, I've stopped a few people. We try to, look, I know most of you have golf carts, we're not ignoring it, we don't, I've stopped a few people, if I see, I'm going to stop and say, look, they're illegal because technically, state law says they are illegal unless the city passes an ordinance. Do we have time to be out patrolling the lakes, looking for golf carts when we've got thefts and fights and domestics and drugs? We don't, it's difficult, especially if, you know, we're shorthanded, just like everyone else is, and we might have one officer on duty, and I, me personally, when I work the road, if I have a single coverage, I'm not going to go on the east side of the lake. If I'm the only officer in town looking, patrolling over that way in case something happens on the other side of town, then I'm, I've just extended my arrival time. So it's a matter of manpower, but the biggest thing for me is just safety. I'm concerned that 16-year-olds, yes, they'll get their license, it'll be legal for them to drive, and I know how 16-year-olds are, I've got a 13-year-old, so I know how they are.
Making the ordinance say 18 would solve that problem.
Would it though? I know plenty of irresponsible 18-year-olds and 25-year-olds.
Well, if your concern's driving to school, which I'm assuming they wouldn't do in the wintertime, but if that's a big concern, if the ordinance says that 18-year-olds would be able to drive, or 20, or whatever, we can simply solve that with the ordinance.
But could you though? I mean, then, I mean, potentially, you could have kids, parents taking their kids, dropping them off at rural school in the mornings. I just don't see that as a good idea personally. I just, it concerns me.
Yeah, I know last summer, we all were on my side of the lake, we caught some young girls driving over there, they had come from the other side of the lake, so they'd been on the highway, and they were 12 and 13 years old. And, you know, I don't know how you're going to handle that, you know, youngsters coming to grandpa and grandmothers for the weekend, and they want to go drive a golf cart, they jump the golf cart, or even in the boat, they may not be even legal to be doing that. A guy called me a month ago, he said, Mayor, I was just at Dairy Queen, there was a golf cart ahead of me in the drive-thru with kids getting their whatever from Dairy Queen. They had to have been on Highway 14. I don't know, that's a concern I have, controlling youngsters.
Another point you bring up is even if we do pass an ordinance, they're still illegal to drive on state roads. So Main Street from 9th South, 9th Street out, all the way out, I mean, those are state roads, so it would be illegal to drive them on the state roads, so Main Street, 9th Street, often.
Whether you're of age or not.
Right, you can cross them perpendicularly.
I think that seems reasonable, right?
I do, yeah.
I wouldn't, you know, as a golfer, I wouldn't drive it on the state roads.
And I don't think they should be driven in any road that has a mile per hour, over 30 miles per hour. I mean, that's logic, and we can do that with an ordinance.
I guess I, from to your point though, I don't really see, I get your point, maybe if there's a 13-year-old in the car.
Could you stand and speak up so we can hear you?
Thank you, and please identify yourself.
Sir Gary Hartwig, I live at 2612 Country Club.
Thank you, Gary.
The, I get the point about the safety side of it, and I totally agree.
Appreciate that.
But to me, that's, I came from law enforcement, so I get it, right? But it's no different than a scooter or motorcycle, right? No different, even the car, the 13-year-old is against the law, your parents have to control, you have to do the right thing as your family to make sure you're following the rules. The rules should not prevent a law-abiding community from having the benefits that are afforded to us within reasonable nature. Do I get the idea licensing, if it's a high school thing? Kathy's exactly right, make it 18, keep them off the state highways. But again, it's, you can't, you know, I get the policing concern about safety, but it's not, you know, there's going to be occurrences, and that's just human nature, whether that's a car, a motorcycle, a scooter, a farm tractor, a combine, a truck, things are going to happen because we're people, people make mistakes, right? But the reality is, it's part of an open culture we have to be for the rights to do things within state and law-abiding manner. I think that's kind of the selling piece here. I mean, I get it, but it's also part of this lake community, and it's a resort community. We want to have fun and have a nice time, and I think this is a way to kind of grow that and grow interest in the community.
Great. Okay, I've got a question for everybody. That has a golf cart. Okay, so obviously you don't come to town. So what are you, what are you using the golf carts for now? You're going from one neighbor's house to the next because?
To the golf course?
Pickleball, friends' houses. Nobody has a golf cart that's going to go over 25 miles per hour, and many of the ordinances, like I said, I came across 72 today, clearly say, okay, you can't have a golf cart that goes over X miles per hour, you can't drive it on a road that has speed limit over 30 miles per hour. There are many things we can do, required turn signals, headlights, stoplights, placards on the back that say "slow-moving vehicle." You know, we just need to have a sensible, smart ordinance so that we can use it on the back roads to get to the golf course if we don't live right next to it. It doesn't make a lot of sense if you want to use your golf cart if you can't drive on the road to get to the golf course. We are asking to drive on highways and busy streets with, you know, 50 mile per hour speed limits, that doesn't make sense, that's not safe. We just want to have the right to operate them safely in our community.
So basically, just primarily around the lake, which?
Principally.
Right. Is already done. Sounds, I don't know, but listening to what Culver gets for their golf carts, that sounds like a lot of money. What are they using with all that money? Where is it going?
I don't know where that goes, I think it goes in the general fund.
Right, so if it goes into the general fund, that one?
It would certainly take some money to administer it to the program. We've already taken a look at, would the clerk treasurer, her office be available to handle the licensing and permitting and everything? The answer was, pretty quickly, no. The police chief doesn't have time to do that. So we would have to establish an ordinance officer, which we've discussed doing, but that would be another department, we'd have to set up another budget. We've got, you know, if the council would decide to do that, we've got room office-wise there at the police station, put a window in the lobby in one area that there's a room right behind it, create an ordinance office. We'd have to hire somebody, maybe a clerk as well. Could be as much as $100,000 budget for that particular office, and then the fees and stuff could also help finance. We could do that, but we'd have to take it from someplace, I think probably Seated Funds. And we've got, David, you mentioned FedCo, we've got $55,000 of funds set in limbo for Fedco to come up with some goals and objectives before council decide to let those funds go. You know, we could take funds from that area, that Seated, to create, set up something.
Yeah, because I think there's, what, $268,000 outside of the $100,000 we have set aside for FedCo?
Yeah, which the counties got twice that much, and they use it to support their general fund, which the state.
I think the county's actually changed that now, Ted, they only have that one office that they share with the U. And I think all the rest of that money's no longer utilized the way it used to be.
So is it going to Fedco?
No, no, you just said that there were Seated dollars outside of Fedco available, and I was saying, yes, there is. Yes, Gary?
Wouldn't it be more efficient to do like an online mail-in permitting process? To me, I think that would be a lot more efficient than spending $100,000 on a window, and, I mean, that's straightforward, it's how I.
Well, you've got to have an inspection process, you know? There'd be a, I can see a cart brought to City Hall parking lot, and then the ordinance officer go through the inspection, check off the list, approve the cart.
Sure, we could do a photo mail-in, where you say, hey, here's my photos of my cart, here's the signals, here's the slow sticker, here's my speed, you know, my little triangle on the back. I think there's some, I would think we could find a more efficient way than spending $100,000 on a, maybe you don't even know what kind of representation you're going to get, maybe it was talking to 30 carts, we talked, it was 36 or something, you just don't even know what response.
Well, I can see, we know that Culver got 576 right now.
That's a bigger community though.
Well.
It's a much bigger community.
Yeah.
I mean, you're saying, or maybe get some more efficient ways to do this, and, so at least something we should consider.
I know, I know it would be advantageous to the officer after checking it all off, slap the sticker on the card, that's the card.
Name of the person.
Card suddenly selected. I live at 2034 White Creek, so my question is, is what if a business in town who has an auto dealer license, so I've been certified through the state, is willing to do the inspection?
There would still have to be some form of documentation through the police department.
Understood. Whatever was set up in the parameters, so there wouldn't be a cost against the government to be able to do that.
Well, those are all possibilities.
Yes. I've got a question for Andy, because I had a, as you commented, and I appreciate all the people that called me, and they were all in my presentation, and with different concerns. I had one call, and I said that I would ask, I said, just have to know the insurance man I want to talk to. Who's liable? My neighbors walking their dog down the street, and someone comes along with a golf cart, and hits them. Who's liable? Where's the liability insurance come from?
They're two attorneys.
I'm worried about the person that made you hit by a golf cart. Are the golf carts, are they going to be covered under homeowners?
If they insured their golf cart, liability, yes.
Okay.
And many of the ordinances, I don't want to interrupt, but Cappy, and again, in many of the ordinances I've perused and read, they require that people maintain insurance, just like you would a state minimum on an automobile. That's written into the ordinance. If you don't have proof of insurance, you don't get certified, you don't get your sticker, you're not able to use the golf cart. That's just something we put in the ordinance to make sure that that situation doesn't happen.
Thank you, good luck.
I have to say, the golf cart's going to be taken off property.
On your premise.
I don't have copies, but I have nine or 10 ordinances, I could provide 70 or 80 more.
Excuse me, pardon. Well, it's, I was going running down the road, it's on your property, so then you'd have to have a separate policy.
Correct.
But I'm sure it's the golf cart, liability.
Thank you.
How do you respond to Chief Bean in saying in August he issued 30 citations?
How do I respond?
How do you respond to that? What, why, why is it that heavy? I mean, I know they have a lot of golf carts.
Yeah, I think they've had so many complaints, that they just got fed up, that's what his words were. And they begin straight to enforcement of the rules and ordinance that they have in place.
There's a huge difference between Culver and Rochester. I mean, Culver has the military academy over there, so there really is, some of those people that come to the lake, they're rich, rich beyond anything any of us in this room can think of, okay? So they really don't care, some of those kids that they're dealing with over there. And personally, I don't think we have that many kids like that in this community. I mean, you know, it's better to deal with reality of the community. Our lake is so far away from our downtown. Culver's lake is right there, and the downtown is built around that lake. So if I was living in Culver, I think I could even see myself saying, yeah, I want a golf cart, even though I'm two blocks this way or that way, because then I can get around downtown a lot quicker. Here in Rochester, I don't know if there'd really be a purpose. I gotta do all my shopping and everything else all the way out there, a golf cart's going to be really inconvenient for me. You know, there's a lot of perspectives to think about.
But I also have heard from one person that has a petition. Because some of her friends and employees want a golf cart so they can drive to work because it's cheaper on gas.
You just don't, you know, drive to work. If you live in town, how much gas would you spend in any way if you, if you work in town? I mean, get a Prius.
I know the lady who's talking, I wish she called me as well, and she was on that. She says, yeah, I've got several folks that love to drive to work with a golf cart, because of gas and everything else, love to drive golf carts.
May I just add one thing on that point? And then as many of these ordinances that I researched, if there's an inch of snow, you may not take your golf cart out. There are all kinds of ways we can solve this problem. We can have from October 31st to March 1st, you can't drive your golf cart. If it's a winter concern, the ordinance, you guys can be as creative as you want and just make it so that those problems are solved. If that's a big concern, that somebody's going to drive their golf cart two blocks to work in the middle of winter, I'm not sure why that would be a concern, but I think it would be uncomfortable, but I just don't see that being a safety issue.
But you have to admit that we could put anything we want in the ordinance, and there will be some people that won't follow it.
Any law, that's the case.
Right, that's the case.
Have there been any golf cart reports of accidents in the last five years in the city of Rochester?
That's why you're neat, because people don't always follow the law?
Yeah, unfortunately.
And I also think there's a point too, that, you know, we all live, we're all adults, we all live in a very nice community. Part of this too, is if I see, you know, you said, you mentioned, hey, grandma and grandpa got their golf cart, and the kid's going to run around, there's also a point of self-policing here too, where it's not my job to stop them, but I'm certainly going to stop by and grandma and grandpa and say, really, this is not the right thing to do. It's not, but again, we all take care of each other here, is where a community really is, right? And if you want to drive it to work, just make that part of yours, and say, this is for, you know, for, you know, social purposes, not for commuting purposes, for how do we want to work? I think there's always a solution to the problem here. You just figure out what is, what's the most, what are the biggest hangups, and I think we can write the ordinance around a way to make it function.
Well, Gary, they always said that 90% of the laws are written for 10%. And I don't think that has changed over the years, but you're always going to have that 10%, that is in Andy's world daily. So, you know, half the room back there raised their hands, said they have a golf cart. And Andy, you're driving your golf cart on streets? So you're not following the ordinance now? I mean, you don't have to fess up. I only know one David Heide.
I wait every time.
He turned the corner there, golf, almost got me, but that's all right. So, you know, there's a number of folks that, they're driving now, and they're not saying, gee, no, we're not supposed to be doing this.
Because they want to use them on the golf course.
There's such a few, such a low percentage rate of accidents that they use it for the golf course, but in slow times, they go to ensure they use it to pick a golf course. The major percentages for recreational use and entertainment, that they aren't going, some, I mean, the majority of them even aren't set up to haul bags. So, that's, I mean, some are, very few are.
Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but Culver's had their first fatality, right?
They had one fatality, I don't know, I think it was actually outside of town limits. They've had four or five.
By the golf cart?
Yeah, they've had four or five DUIs, just like we said.
It's going to happen. I have time. James Reese, it's in your order.
I have a couple of questions. Is everyone here from around the lake? Is there anyone from in-town interested in this? Second question for you, Andy. What, if we, if we craft an ordinance and we limit it geographically, is that an issue? I mean, do we open ourselves up to litigation if we say, over here you can, but over here you can't?
No, because geography is not a protected class. I think that would be difficult for someone to open up that way. Would people complain about that if you said, for example, you can only do this within 300 feet of Lake Magna Talon? And someone who lived downtown complained about that? I don't think that's actual, I don't think that would go anywhere. But the state, the big two no-no's for cities and towns are, you can't duplicate or conflict with another state law, and you basically can't impose additional licensing or, you say, you can't say, your state driver's license is great, but you need to have this thing in order to test. But yeah, there are differences among those, explicitly allows, like Chief said, explicitly allows the crossing of the state highway at 90 degrees, and has to set a limit on the number of passengers that may be permitted. There are some other complications communities have run into about the, what's regulated as a golf cart versus what's regulated as an off-road utility vehicle, but. as a golf cart versus what's regulated as an off-road utility vehicle, but by and large, a restriction like that in an ordinance is possible. There's nothing in the statute preventing that.
Further that subject, the young lady from Madison Street, she says, I have 20 signatures now, I can have 50 by the city council meeting, can I come and present that to the city council meeting in town? And I said, what you need to do is get ahold of your city council member and shut a chance to get ahold of you, because I can't rule for me.
Three, you under the bus didn't.
So, I mean, the point being, I think if you do anything, we'll have, we'll hear from the rest of the...
I would think so. I mean, downtown eateries, like people wanting to go to a golf course, well, someday I might want to go to...
Absolutely.
But then again, you get into the restriction of Main Street, Main Street, two-year-olds that we're talking about.
Well, and I did a catering in the middle of summer over at Culver, and I had to, I forgot something, so I had to rush back to Rochester, which is like a really major thing. There was nobody calling, saying, get over here and bring it. And I got behind a golf cart.
Prius. Yeah, Prius.
So, yeah, so I'm like, almost like a golf cart, right? So, but, you know, as I'm driving behind it, I'm like, oh, well, first I was like, this is pretty cool, you know? And then after a while, I was like, oh dang, I really need to pass this person. But when she, when it got to that point, I was like, I guess that wasn't that bad. You know, because I was thinking of that. Wasn't that bad. And there are times when the downtown of Culver, it slows people down. And quite frankly, boy, I would love to have foot traffic or what the heck ever that brings business in, you know? And if golf carts would help that a little bit, would I, would I have a problem with it? No, I mean, point blank. Anything to bring business in right now, you know? And to have people from other communities want to live here instead of where they're at.
Tom Kennedy, I don't have a golf cart, I do have a bike, and I can usually pedal faster than some golf carts around the lake, I usually pass them on there. But anyway, where I'm going with that is, can we, can you also limit that to maybe just the evenings around town or weekends versus during, like Friday afternoon till, or Fridays at 5:30, the timing is, I go 9th Street, keep them off 9th Street, Main Street, the other streets, because it, what I observe in Winemac is, it definitely does make a community. Those people go, from what I observe over there, is that they go to the park where their kids play ball, they go to One Eye Jack's downtown, I don't see them on the main drag of 35 at times.
Oh, that's illegal.
Yeah, so, I don't know if you can write something that you can keep it off 9th Street and Main Street, be able to open it up for the town, and maybe you can do by seasons, but it just seems like, it's definitely a community thing, and when you think about some of these scooters and, and these electronic or electric scooters that kids are riding, golf carts, you can at least haul some stuff, there's a little bit around you, but those things aren't safe either, as far as that goes.
Chase, any comments or...
You know, I don't know that I really have a stance one way or the other. I kind of feel like maybe we can establish a committee to kind of discuss it more and go through that process, just to kind of see what that would look like for us, for the city.
Good point.
Ted?
Well, it's, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
If, it's obviously an issue that has more people talking about it than we've had on any other issue for a long time. So, the Lake Association folks did a good job of contacting at least several of us, because I got a lot of contacts. There's a lot of people here, which we never get public at our meetings, so it's a good thing to have them here, and it's a good thing to have a discussion. So, I would be in favor of trying to, I understand the administrative side of it, I understand the cost of administering a program. I also have always thought of our ordinance book as being a city ordinance book, not a area-specific, an area-specific book, but it seems like we ought to have the ability to have a little more discussion about it and look at true numbers from a city standpoint and what it would really cost to administer. And then have conversation that would include Tom and Andy both maybe, and certainly Lake Association people, maybe two or three of us, just to look at how we could, if we can, realistically come up with some solution that makes sense to me, but I'm not looking for extra meetings, but...
And I'm with you, I'm with you, Marty.
Okay.
You know, because obviously this, I've got quite a few phone calls on this, but we have, you know, first of all, we have to see whether it's realistic or not, whether we could come up with something that the city can handle, that we can patrol and control for the safety of everybody's safety.
Because what we have going on right now is not good. We've got people violating existing ordinance and willfully doing that, and we have a police department that has certainly let that go on without causing, they don't want to cause trouble for people, but what's happening now is not good. So, it seems like we ought to try to, you know, come to some real...
Yeah, the dad-driven... The part that's disturbing to me, as I mentioned, is you've got children...
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need, we need to get something in place, right, wrong, whatever, and move forward. Would you, John, and you, Marty, serve on a committee to...
Certainly.
... investigation and evaluation?
Certainly.
What I've got in mind here is putting together a committee that we meet a couple of times before next council meeting. Hi, Councilman, how are you?
Good.
Did you go to the county building instead of...
I'd like to serve on that, I think if the listening agree, if Lisa would be willing, I've heard since...
Well, Lisa, I don't have anything against you, but how about the young lady who did all the research?
Yeah, we'll do it together.
For both of you?
Yeah.
You guys travel together, do you? Okay. Yeah, Gary?
Yeah, great.
Well, what I've got in mind here is a couple of council members, somebody from Redevelopment Commission, because we've talked about this in Redevelopment Commission meetings, not golf carts per se, but ordinance establishing, and somebody to champion ordinance statutory requirements in town. We've got, yeah, we've got some holes there. So, somebody from the Redevelopment Commission, a couple of council members, you two, if you give us your contact information, let me leave, will, and Chief, Shota, and Lawyer Perkins, sit down, that'd be all right with you, Andy Perkins? Sit down and discuss the whole situation, what we have to put in place. Yeah, you're gonna have to enforce whatever, something with secure available, pardon that. Is that something that sounds workable?
Yes, yeah.
Lisa, you're pretty flexible on when you can be available. How about you, ma'am, are you, are you pretty, what's the best time of the day for you?
Afternoon's would be better, but I can make anything happen.
Okay. I like that, that's fine. Does that sound okay, John?
It works today, yeah, yeah, I'm for it, because there's been a lot of answers, I've got, I've got a lot of calls and emails, and I've been enlightened on a lot of different things that other communities have put into this, and some of the restrictions as far as a 16-years-old, also could bump it to 18, I think if it's 16, it's 16, you know, you can drive a cart, you can drive a golf cart, but also rural regulations, seat belts, lights, a lot of these things that I'd never considered before, have been brought to my attention in the last week and numerous times. And that's fine, because I tell people when they call me, you know, I want to hear from you. I want your opinion, I want to know what you're thinking about. And then, of course, as I tell everybody, we see what we can do, what we can do financially for the city, and which, main thing is, the most important thing is, what we consider safe.
Absolutely.
And that's a top priority. That's a top priority. And I guarantee you what, there's some grandparents out here, you tell me your grandchild is over five years old and I've been behind that wheel, I'm going to question you, because I have lived on the lake for too many years, and that's the one, that's been one of my major concerns.
Now, we've seen them. But John's absolutely right, and it isn't about what's going to be easy for us, top of the list. A guy asked me the other day, what's the top list thing for a mayor to look at every day? And that is safety and accountability. That says it all. So, you know, we're very, very big on the safety part. We're only going to have one bite of this apple. Once you open Pandora's box, it's hard to put her back in, so we want to make sure we've researched it, if we go forth with it, council votes to go forth with it, make sure we're doing it right. It's like Andy said, Chief Bean over Culver, he'd like to have another opportunity at that apple, but it just doesn't work that way. Right? Well, thank you, and ladies, please make sure Shota has your contact information before you leave. If you just want to write it down and hand it to her, and the rest of you, this is the way we work it. If you don't want to stay for another hour and a half of city council meeting, and you're here just for the golf carts, you can leave now.
Because there's no donuts in coffee.
No, we don't have donuts in coffee. But thank you all for coming, thank you.
Thanks for your work.
Now, I'm waiting.
What are you guys doing? I don't know. Why are you trying to get up? Well, hide yourself.
Yeah, about this one.
It's not, it's just gonna happen. Take your vote in.
Yeah, now, we're preparing to sing at the county...
There's no work.
Vacation of the alley, and thank you.
Thank you, please, thank you.
Thank you, folks, for hanging in there with us. Okay, we're gonna have a public hearing now on vacation request of the alley by Times Theater, and I will entertain a motion to open a public hearing. Moved by Goodman, seconded by Smith, those in favor, okay? unanimous, I declare the public hearing open. Okay. Who's representing? Marty? Why am I not surprised? Would you stand and identify yourself for the record?
I am. My name is Julie Lou Shamarker, and I'm the chairman of the Times Theater, and happily willing to answer any questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
How's the theater coming?
Any questions?
Oh, okay. Go for it. It's outstanding, like Jim Scott started a mural two days ago, seats are in, if anyone attended the open house, you wouldn't even recognize it.
Oh, it's come that far?
Oh, yeah. We're turning some pretty nice corners right now, it's exciting.
I see some progress on the marquee.
Yes, they're so reliant on the weather, like, if it's windy, they can't come, if it, you know, they need five dry hours, and then it got too hot for a while, but there, it's...
Well, Julie, I, you know, I give you props for finding somebody who'd work on it while it's still up. I mean, in the past, there were people we talked with about it, and they all want to take it down.
They wanted to absolutely take it...
Take it to Ohio or whatever.
That's...
That's no easy feat, yeah, so I give you credit.
It would've been a fun parade to have for it to come home, though.
Are these folks, are these folks going to do any of the neon?
All of it.
All of it?
We've got one contractor handling everything, I've seen pictures of the neon, it was bent probably, I'll say a month ago by now. The Times letters, we have the originals back with us, they recreated that. All the pieces are in motion, and they're just, the bottom will be one of the last things to go on, I probably get five texts a week, like, where's the bottom, while they need access to be up there and rewire all the neon, all the sockets.
I looked inside there one time. You did? Yeah.
Yeah, and we're, Newby Electric's running new service to said $120,000 marquee, I wanted to get that word out, is that much needed? We're stretching our budget so thin, but we have to do it right.
I think I shared with you that the Honeywell folks, when they were working on the movie theater over there, said the day they got the marquee, so they could turn it on, that whole town...
Yeah, we're in neck deep, and I don't even think, we know how exciting it's going to be that day.
Yeah.
It's, we can't wait.
Well, I can't.
And the Huddlups have been so generous lately, we have full contractors chip in, I mean, show up for labor, it's a very moving project, to say the very least.
As you know, there are many people in the community that have a lot of memories of Times Theater.
Absolutely.
I can't tell you how many Saturday afternoons Marty Smith and I were kicked out of there.
Me too.
You too?
You too.
Remember those days?
I know that I was never kicked out for the theater.
No, God bless you for doing that.
And I'll tell you one thing that always comes up, and this is really exciting, the phone booth on 8th and Main, when in the 80s, you left the theater, you either went to the phone booth to call, or to the dugout and knock on the glass, depending on the deal, but I've been really working with the phone company, and we're getting our phone booth back.
Or...
And we're gonna turn it into a photo booth.
There was one other place you'd go to, where you're talking about right now, it was called the hamburger.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, for sure.
Yeah?
Perfect.
Yeah, you got a great hamburger, and those string fries, wow.
And Cindy, right here, is spearheading, people are being very generous with their memories, and we built a shadow box, and between Joyce Good, Dick Geltzer, Laura Snipes, we've got quite a few people bringing in, we have senior chords, the excellence, Chutu from Pamela on the way, like, we're, it's really getting fun. People brought us a chandelier, like, from Thea, so...
Oh, wow.
It's pretty cool.
That's gonna be neat.
So, if you have something for memory box, hit ahold of Cindy.
Okay, back to the business at hand here, you need, or you're asking to have the alley where the hamburger house was and the theater vacated, which is not used for anything.
At all, yeah. We had our first car go down it last week, the day after it was in the paper. We weren't long, we're like, it's a car.
Wasn't a golf cart?
No. But it's essential to the project, we can't reopen without a second emergency exit, which would be provided by the first set of double doors heading into the alley.
Into that, that area.
Yeah. We had Chief Butler down there, Dwayne Borders constantly helping us with our ongoing drainage issues, which have been much improved. There's manhole coverage, the different things, he and I talked on Sunday, actually, and we're working through all that, we put a new roof in, which has helped. Ruth has been essential, she's owns the other half of Sed.
Alley, yeah.
Alley. We've had water issues, we had to build our own curb, pour our own concrete curb around the theater to keep water out of the building, like, there, we've got, you know, some inches to make up to get it leveled out.
As far as the alley goes, my only question would be, and it would be to Chief Butler...
Like, we've got, you know, some inches to make up to get it leveled out.
As far as the alley goes, my only question would be, and it would be to Chief Butler. We've vacated other alleys before. Is there, you, you're the person that I'm most interested in. Do you have any kind of a problem? Would you say, no, it isn't?
No, I couldn't get our apparatus down there. If it is through utility poles, it's too narrow. I would have to park right against the building, and I'd be in the collapse zone. It's a bolstering construction. So should anything ever happen and that be compromised, it's, yeah, it's not the place I want to be. So we're better off in the street and taking the hose down. So we're coming in on the backside. But that has no effect on any operation that we would engage in for any emergency at that building.
Thank you, Chief. And that's my only concern.
And that's a good concern.
That's my only concern.
I did go down and look.
Yeah.
After last meeting, she was here, I went down for her request and walked in. I said, I couldn't get a truck down there anyway. I mean, I have to pull way over in the grass, and it's just, it's not feasible.
Ruth, you're the other property owner. What would your plans be for the half of the, anything?
I have ideas, but I don't know if it's time to share them. To be determined. To be determined, yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Do I make a motion that we vacate the alley? I'm ready to.
Any more comments from council meeting before I open it up?
We're only talking about that half alley, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Between...
It runs along...
Between the north side alley on the west side and Main Street.
Yeah.
It's a very narrow alley. I mean, even if I've used it over the past five years, it's because I drive through the yard anyways.
Exactly.
And get in there. You can't, you know, you almost cannot go from the alley behind the bar and that and turn directly into it.
Utility pole, would you build the hamburger hut?
You know what? There is no service. There is no septic there or anything on that whole side.
I don't know how they did any washing. I really don't.
You know, I don't think any of us really want to.
I don't think anybody wants to.
Be careful enough.
Move on.
They were correct. No, I mean, open it up to the public. Comments, anybody?
Let's go with open up to the public.
Anybody have anything to say in the audience? Yay or nay? Okay. Have a motion closed the hearing, public hearing. Moved by Smith, seconded by Goodman, those in favor closing the hearing. Okay. Better than hearing closed. Okay.
Now, my original, my original was that we vacate the alley.
Well, in ordinance...
I can't get through this one yet. So we know where it's going, but you can't get there.
John, we love your expeditious manner tonight.
Well, I tried to get in on that one. Thank you. I'm building another hamburger hut.
This would be under ordinance zero three dash twenty twenty-two, alley vacation, slice Times Theater. For the first reading of ordinance number three dash one twenty-two by title only.
I'll second it.
Ruth?
Should I be part of the vote? Or should I, should I lose myself since I...
You probably should recuse yourself.
Yes, because, because...
She's going to end up with half the property.
I'm, yeah.
Okay. So Ruth has recused herself from voting. I've got a...
You've got a motion.
Second. First reading by title only. First reading by title only, those in favor. Okay. We'll have the first reading by title. Ordinance number three dash twenty twenty-two, ordinance vacating public ways, city of Rochester, Rochester Township, Fulton County, Indiana. Okay, any discussion? One, two, three, four, five. Okay. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules and have the second reading of ordinance zero three dash twenty twenty-two?
So moved by title only.
By title only?
Yes.
Okay. It's moved by Smith and seconded by Garrett. The second reading by title only, those in favor? Five, zero. Okay.
Ordinance number three dash twenty twenty-two, ordinance vacating public ways, city of Rochester, Rochester Township, Fulton County, Indiana.
Okay. Make a motion to suspend the rule and have the third reading.
Second.
Okay, moved by Todd and seconded by Bryant to suspend the rule and have a third reading. Those in favor? And we need five votes, so that, okay. Five votes, do it. Okay. Would you like to have the third reading by title only?
Ordinance number three dash twenty twenty-two, ordinance vacating public ways, city of Rochester, Rochester Township, Fulton County, Indiana.
Those in favor accepting ordinance zero three dash twenty?
Moved that we adopt. Ordinance three dash twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Second.
John tried to do it.
I'll second it.
Okay, now, now. Those in favor?
Getting the door here thundered.
Yes, you now. Ladies, we're vacating the alley.
Is that going to be physically blocked off?
Ask the property.
Oh, you got plans for that?
Yes.
Does it go lock off or parking?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
And if you work with the chief, that'd be great.
I just wanted to make sure it's going to be done. I've got an idea in how they do it. Just wanted to make sure that it got blocked off, so they couldn't drive down there unknowingly.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
So we're going to let this, if you care to leave, you may. If you want to stick around, that's fine, too. We're going to jump back up to our business. Fedco deliverable goals from August eighteenth, meaning each member was to bring one back from the U. Where are we?
Well, it's from our budget meeting.
Right.
We list half, and the other half, depending on what we will come up with. One, easy one is, you know, a director, getting a director. And that's underway. Anyone else have one?
Well, didn't we say Fedco should be delivering some goals?
Well, we asked each councilman to come up with one. No, I mean, Fedco can name their own objectives, but if I'm telling you what your objectives for me are, I mean, that's a little... What do we want to see? I mean, we're holding the money, so what do we want to see as a deliverable? That's how, that's as I recall the conversation from left.
I think we talked about having Fedco give to the council a workable plan, like what their twelve-month plan was.
I think going with you, I think Fedco should be part of, you know, what's the game plan with apartments south of town or wherever in the community, a new apartment complex? Are they working with the redevelopment team? Or do they have another developer that maybe people of the community would be happier with? You know? Because one showed up and wanted to develop in town, where's another one? And isn't that something that they should do anyway?
Actually, Ruth, I can't give you any specifics right now, but you'll hear at the redevelopment mission here tomorrow, there is a developer that has, owns property and is going to do that. You'll hear about it at the redevelopment mission.
Shouldn't they also be working with them?
Well, I think they might be. I don't know. I just got worried about the debate.
That's where I think it should, you know, they should be part of that group. And is one developer enough? You know, after, let's say with that, you know, the last one wanted six hundred apartments, which, you know... Okay, so maybe this one has twenty apartments. Twenty apartments is going to be enough in four years or three years. I mean, that might be a good start. So then, where's that next reach that you go to? You don't stop. So, you know.
The effort is underway to get a housing study. And with one, I think, also goes into getting developers sitting down and putting together a plan. And I'm not... I mean, there are efforts there, but, you know. Other areas that we kind of, you know, we've got lackers being developed. And I'm saving that for my report.
So is that one of the goals that we want for Fedco, to be involved in creating more housing? Worker housing?
Yeah.
So... Can I be recognized, Ted?
Yep.
So Fedco has been working on putting together a coalition for the housing study. We have met with the housing authority, the schools. Can't remember the whole list, and I actually did the meetings, which was my age, I guess. But, so there's five or six groups, and there's going to be a meeting within the next couple of weeks to bring all those partners together to talk about the study. And Fedco plans on facilitating that study to be the resource for everyone to come together and have a plan for housing. Because clearly, we have a housing issue. When Fedco did their six-month review with the community, that was clearly something that was at the forefront. So there is going to be an opportunity, or we're planning on a housing study, to get the coalition together. And there seems to be great interest in having that done.
Have you found somebody to do the study, to identify somebody?
We have talked to the company that did Casillasco, I think, and also Stark in Noble County. We've had conversations with them. All the feedback in those communities has been very positive, and that's where we went to get an idea of what it would cost, of what it would take. One nice thing about that company, if that's the one you go with, is not only do they do the study, but they stay boots on the ground and help implement that study to see the housing development actually happen.
Oh, that's good.
Because what we heard so many times was these studies are done, and you have a study, and then everybody goes home and slaps each other on the back, and nothing's ever built. So this firm has had great success with finding the developers and actually staying with the project through fruition. So that's what really led us to those people. This was actually something that came up at the Ready Grant meeting that was held out at the high school. And so Fedco is taking the lead on that of getting a coalition together. So when that meeting is held, clearly, the city, county, everybody will be invited. Get everybody in the room, so we all can work together on finding common ground on that housing. Because it's not Rochester issue, it's a Fulton County issue. So we need to include everybody in this process.
It's a nation issue.
It's a huge issue.
Yeah.
Can I put another one in? Okay. What about a hotel? I know that it's been discussed in the past, is that... Well, okay, but shouldn't the Fedco also be involved with that, too? You're, I mean, we're asking for different things for them to work on. One other thing that a lot of people are asking about is another grocery store, since...
Save-A-Lot.
Save-A-Lot went out, and they're actually saying Aldi's.
Well, yeah.
So is there, and there's rumor about Aldi is at one time going to come to Rochester. I'm just saying, people are like... So does Fedco know anything about that? There you go. That's just another thing that they can help work on. I'm just...
There... I don't have a meeting tomorrow where I'm going to be making a bunch of announcements.
Right.
And I assume this is on. There are things in process from what...
Yeah, Eddie, you contacted me today and say, hey, that Save-A-Lot building would make a great roller skating rink. Somebody, you know?
Did that once.
Kind of have to check with the owner of the properties.
She was right.
Oh, it would be great. Yeah. It would be great. Yeah. Plans, yeah.
It's not whole floor then?
Too many holes. No, it's big enough. Yeah. But what you're saying is there's a conversation going on with the owners of the building. Okay. You going to be there?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, I'd like to get a clarification of who's supposed to be doing what. Because I've got to believe that the position that Fedco's in now, if the council is lording half of the contribution over there, how effective are they in trying to get a director hired to be here? And especially when all of these things are happening and they will and should be involved in the discussion. So what do we need to do to get that figured out? And how do we, you know? It was Fedco thinking that the council was doing something, council thinking Fedco's doing something. So I just, we ought to be able to get that resolved for Fedco as quickly as possible.
What are you thinking as far as the point that we say, okay, yes, the other half is released? Or it's not released? What does that look like?
That's what these points are for.
I understand, but, you know...
So if there's a director, if there's a twelve-month plan, if there's work towards developing housing?
So we're naming all things that are in the works. I mean, a director's not going to happen overnight. And it is more difficult with, you know, one hand tied behind your back with not full funding. But we'll overcome that, you know, in talking to the committee working on that.
You've got six months before it becomes an issue. Because you're paid monthly, right? If all these issues are already being worked on, then it probably won't be hard to qualify for.
I don't know. I'm trying to clarify, you know, what evidence are we looking? What, you know, what does the council want to see to be satisfied?
I'm trying to wrap my mind exactly around what Marty's saying. Are you saying, Marty, that you want Fedco to be responsible for publicity on what they're doing and what they're accomplishing? Or what are you asking for?
Look, Fedco just showed some success with the announcement that was in the paper a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
No, not because I believe, but I think the mayor was making it clear that he wanted to see some succession of small successes before we actually did truly release the second half of their fronting. So to me, they're making small steps. And they aren't showing some success, and they had to change their operations. So I don't know what else we need to see and what...
It's been a year since the director left. I think that's huge. Need to have somebody that's saying, I'm the one. Right now, you've got committees, and you've got an interim lady, a great lady, but she was the secretarial staff. What I'm... They need, I think we need to see that. We need to see the director. We need to see the person who's going to come in here.
That's the main thing.
That's the main thing I would like to see first and foremost.
And I think that's valuable for them.
And then that person comes and lets us know what that plan would be. Yeah. So I'm hearing, I think, let me just put this out there, that between what Marty and you are saying, Ted, we would like a liaison from Fedco to be more communicative about what is going on, not only with us as a council, but with the public as well. Yeah. And not just our representative or agent, but somebody who lives in every day. And that could be the director, it could be someone else from the Fedco group. Well, I would think it would be the director, the person saying, damn, strap it on. Here's what our goals and objectives are.
Would it be reasonable to say that they need to find a director by such and such time?
By definition, it would be a six-month period.
And within six months, they have to have a director. Has anybody, do you have, have you looked at all at anybody?
We went through a interview process during which time you're doing the six-month study. And it became obvious that, to us, it probably didn't make sense to offer a job for a director until we had a plan in place to make sure we had the right person for the plan. So now we are going back and looking at that director search again to make sure we have someone that we feel like can execute the plan that we have. So that is in process, Ruth.
Okay.
Okay, so it sounds like we would like to see someone communicate to us as a city council on a regular basis with progress is being made. So just a liaison from Fedco to come report. Other than a city council committee. Is that accurate?
What do you think, pretty, pretty. Did I get to, did I get to remind you of what's on the agenda? Well, I think that's going to happen with the new buyouts, isn't it? You'll be the one. Okay, any other comments? Okay, we're going to revisit the golf carts on, oh, no. I'm going to jump around again, here we go. Uh, we're going back to the ordinances, but Will.
Why don't you allow?
No, let's take, let's take.
New business.
Yeah, Linda Johnson.
Well, okay.
There's Linda, Carrie.
I'm Alacia Sturgis.
And you're not Linda?
I'm the better half. Now, the younger half, um, no.
I'm an older mayor, but I remember Linda looked a lot different.
A lot different, yes. She is the program director, um, I am her staff coordinator.
Okay.
I've been working with her for about four years now with this program. I'm with the adult guardianship program for Area Five. Um, I'd like to bring you guys some great news today. Um, it may not be so great to you, but it's great to us. Um, we are, we have a sister program out of Anderson named Guardian Advocates Incorporated. And we've been talking with them for about the last year or so about merging with them. Um, we've come to some roadblocks with Area Five in our program to be able to grow. Um, so this has been a huge, um, plan that we have put together on this merger. And we have spoke with Area Five in regards to this, they're all on board and everything with this merger. And we've still got a while's ways to go. Um, we plan this to happen by the first of the year. Um, the only thing that will change in regards to you guys is our name. Um, we're still going to provide the same service, so to go in detail about the service that we provide. Again, we are an adult guardianship program. Um, we are funded through the cities and the counties and, and the people. We work for the people, we're funded by the people. Um, we've had great success in Rochester over the last year and a half that we have served. And, um, we've had excellent help and assistance from the attorneys in this area to obtain that guardianship that we have gotten guardianship for. So, um, Sheriff Sailors came to us probably about the beginning of this year, as well as Judge Lee, and asked us, can you be a part of these individuals' lives and obtaining guardianship for them? So one was an exploitation case and one was a failure to thrive case living in deplorable conditions. So we jumped right on, we had already had two guardianship cases prior to these two cases. And we obtained guardianship right away. We were able to, with the deplorable failure to thrive, get him into a long-term care facility. And he's thriving now, I mean, he's doing so much better. We're talking about moving him into an assisted living facility. He can't necessarily due to the incapacitation. Um, and he will always remain capaci- incapacitated due to his mental incapacity. Um, so, but least restrictive alternatives, moving him into an assisted living versus a nursing facility or letting him go back out onto his property where there's deplorable conditions. So, and then we're also manning the faculty, having to figure out what we're going to be doing with the property. And, um, I know one of Linda's, uh, mayor, one of your big concerns was putting a number on, a, a dollar amount on the individuals that we serve.
No, if I could correct you, and I think Councilman Garrett and I had the same concern. It was the numbers in Fulton County you're serving as opposed to the other counties that you're working in.
Right, right, yes, so.
And when Linda was here, I believe it was only one at that county.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I think, and we had just started in Fulton, I think is, so we got funded initially in 2020. And then she came back, yes, last year, and then we had a brother and a sister that we had collectively gotten together. And then this year, we, we are now up to six. So we have four guardianships and two pending. Um, it's, it's coming as it is, COVID really shut us down for Fulton, Miami County in 2020. So it really got hard for us to get out there and advocate for these individuals, to even get our name out there for individuals to call us for referrals.
Yes.
Um, so.
I think it speaks wonders for you that the sheriff and judge reached out to you.
And that's because, yeah, we got out to them this year. We, we sat down with Sheriff Sailors and said, hey, look, we've got this program. And, and that is an open door to these individuals as well as, you know, mental health is.
Homeless?
Homelessness, mental health.
For real?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I've got somebody in mind.
Absolutely, um, matter of fact, we've seen a gentleman, I've seen a gentleman, we just hired our third, uh, she's our guardianship, guardianship specialist. And she's going to be doing Fulton, Miami, and Cass. And I, I sent her a picture of a homeless gentleman, I said, here's your next referral. Um, so, no, but seriously, you know, that is our job. We go out there as what APS would do if somebody is homeless or is living in deplorable conditions. And we evaluate them, we assess them. If they aren't incapacitated, it doesn't matter. We're still going to do what we can with other entities within the community to get them the resources and, and safer living conditions than what they're living in now. We have a homeless gentleman in Cass that we're working with. Um, I don't know that we'll get guardianship of him, but we're putting in a lot of time to get him off the streets. He has his legs wrapped, he's got wounds, goes to wound care. And we're working with Fort County to get him proper intermittent placement until we, as the guardianship program, can work to getting him a suitable, um, long-term living placement. So that is our ultimately, ultimate goal regardless of guardianship, is to help these individuals in the community. And we have been extremely successful at getting these individuals the help that they need. Um, we walked into homes where individuals didn't want to go to the hospital. They didn't think they needed to go to the hospital. And we were ultimately able to say, hey, this is for your good, for your, you deserve more than this, you know? Rather than just walking in and saying, oh, well, hell, this is the way they want to live and then walking back out. No, we are, and we, we promise to stay with them, you know? I think that's a big thing for individuals who don't have family members, who may have some type of incapacitation. Um, so that is our program. Um, we're looking to build more here in Fulton County. Um, again, we've got an employee here now specifically for Fulton County. And, um, she will be working on those other two guardianships. The good thing about the merge as well, um, we are the merging company, they will be the East. Um, John Longyaker, he is a elder law attorney. So in the event that there's a shortage in attorneys in any of our counties, we can always turn to him for assistance with our guardianships, so.
Ever heard of a shortage of attorneys? I'm sorry.
Well, I, I, and he is fantastic, his staff is fantastic, I, but they're, they're just like anybody else, you know? After COVID, everybody got, it seems like everybody has just gotten hit over and over again with more work. And so sometimes when they're overworked and they can't take the.
You need some labor.
Yeah, absolutely.
And they, I'm going to cut to the chase here. Are you, are you here just to report the activities tonight or are you asking for something?
We want to report, yeah, and I want to, I wanted to come back and ask again for the same amount that we've asked for for the last year and a half, two years, uh, the five thousand, yeah, five thousand dollars.
I don't know if you noticed, but, uh, you know, it's, it's a great program, you do a lot of good work. The concern was the number from Fulton County that was being served.
Right.
We went ahead and approved five thousand, but we, shot it correctly, throw it wrong, it was taken from the mayor's fund, correct? The promotional fund, yeah.
I believe so.
Yep, no, that's, that's where it came from.
Okay.
We didn't really have any avenue budget-wise.
Okay, and if I may interject just a second, um, moving forward, have Linda put this on her agenda for a May?
Yep.
Or June meeting because we've already approved our budget for next year.
Okay.
Tonight it's being adopted.
Oh, okay.
Well, and I believe you told her that.
I believe I did, but remind her.
Yeah, I will.
That we, we get it in, we get it in a conversation during budget session meetings, council meets, usually the first part of July. We have an overall discussion of the, all budget items. So she can come in and you, chat with them and give updates.
Well, and instead of a council meeting, she would be invited to the budget session meeting.
Okay.
Then before we.
And going forward, I'll, I'll be the, the mediator.
Mediator?
Yeah, spokesperson.
The intermediate.
The intermediate, yes, thank you, for this, um, so here's my face. Alacia, oh, yeah.
And then I'm sorry, your name again?
Alacia.
Alacia.
Yep, Alacia Sturgis, A-L-A-C-H-I-A.
Sturgis, okay.
Yeah.
Just like in motorcycle.
With an extra S.
S-T-U-R-G-I double S.
Yep, oh, no.
Nope.
S-T-U-R-G-E-S-S, sorry.
G-E.
Yep.
Any questions for?
Do you live in Fulton County?
I do not, I actually live in Cass County. So, but I do serve Fulton County as well. Um, Linda, our new staff, uh, guardianship specialist, Rennie, and I, we all have been navigating Fulton County. Very lovely, very lovely city. Um, one of the, I, I think Linda had mentioned to me, you know, um, one of the questions was that, um, again, back to the numbers of a person, I can't directly give you a number of a person because I think what you were asking was how much time would one specific, how much money would one specific person cost for the time that she put into it?
No, what we were asking, right, you're from Cass County, you live in Cass County. Your services are heavily involved in Cass County.
Mm-hmm.
Heavily. That's where you, that's where you came out of, right?
No, no, we actually came out of Tipton County.
Howard, Howard County?
Howard, Tipton, Cass, Fulton, Miami.
Okay.
We serve all five, yeah. We got into Howard and Cass in 2019. 2018 is when she started it in Tipton. And then we got into Fulton and Miami in 2020.
So you serve in the north central region?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So I did have the letter of intent that she had sent out to, I, I'm assuming everybody got it. Um, the numbers for Fulton County, we have served over the year and a half that we've been here, we've served 11 individuals. Just because we don't get guardianship, again, doesn't mean that we're not actively involved in your community with serving these individuals at whatever capacity we can. Um, we are all about least restrictive alternative, alternatives, probate code, the VASIA program. Um, probate code 29 is, is implemented in that code that we use least restrictive alternatives. So if we can spend 10 hours a week finding, um, individuals who might surface to help their family member out, and after we thoroughly kind of investigated them to make sure they're not going to exploit their family member, then we can kind of walk them through a process of obtaining guardianship themselves, becoming power of, the power of attorneys or healthcare reps to help them make decisions, or just even be involved in their family member's lives. So out of these 11, we only have guardianship of the four with two pending, so that would be six.
But you've actually entered the lives of 11 people in Fulton County.
Yes, in a year and a half, that's good, that's actually a lot.
Well, I mean, you got some money from the county, right?
Yes, they have, they have, um, granted us $5,000.
Okay, and our $5,000 spread over 11 is $455, that's, it's not a lot of money, service of 11 people. I think my promotional funds were well spent. Again, I would go out on a limb, I don't use all those promotional funds, I would do that again if the council would allow me to do that. Sound all right, do we need a vote for that?
No, because you've got, you have $10,000 budgeted to use your promotional funds however.
Couldn't you, couldn't you do an additional appropriation to make John really happy?
I could, and you're going to have one next month.
Great.
So we'll just add to that.
I don't know where that came from, neighbor.
No, I, out of my promotional fund, that would be.
But no, I don't believe you need an actual, and it won't be, uh, she'll just, you, you, whoever, will just need to send the letter of request the first of the year for the, the funds that we released. Um, I think she sent it to me in February last year.
Okay.
I believe, I know she waited till, I asked her to wait till after January, so.
Okay, again, I'm in training for all that, so please excuse me if I'm not.
Like I said, your, your presentation saying you've touched 11 people in Fulton County, it's a lot better than.
Two, one.
Yes, now, but I will also say, I don't think we did the full five, did we? I think, you know, we did 2,500, yeah.
No, we did 5,000.
No, she requested five, but I believe the council only offered 2,500, I believe that's right.
Well, I came for my promotional fund.
I know, but, no. You had two asks out of the promotional fund last year, only 2,500 of this one, so do you want to do the full five? That's what I, I want to make sure, you want to do a full five?
Yeah.
Okay.
Full five, yeah. She asked for five and that's what we, uh, getting. So do we owe you another 2,500?
Wow. You're being, I won't turn it down.
2,500 last year. You only knew.
You know, nobody up here agrees with you on that.
Also, top of my head, there was, there was, there was like, right at the, after budgets last year, there were three or four asks and you guys did split your votes and split your money. I know they only received 2,500 based on the vote.
I think you guys were waiting on the commissioners to decide, yeah, and then they ended up with 5,000.
Oh, they hadn't, they hadn't committed yet.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
So there, but yes, Chase, I don't remember off the top of my head, but there were like one or two other nonprofits that requested that at the same time.
I think it was the Chase Thompson reelection.
Look at you, trying to judge them too.
I've got a motion that we give $5,000 out of the mayor's promotional fund, do I have a second? Goodman made the motion, Todd seconded those in favor, okay.
Bless you all, thank you so much.
Now it's on the record.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you for that. Okay, uh, we're back down to the ordinances, we're ready for the ordinance, 04-2022, uh, 2023 budget.
I'm sorry?
We're ready for the 2023 budget ordinance.
You want that one now?
04-2022.
Thank you, uh, nothing has changed from the, from the public hearing, so the final numbers here. Um, it's all still the same, the adoption, the total adopted tax levy is $3,668.90.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, the adopted tax rate is 1.0767. And our home rule funds, total budget is, which are the non-tax supported, that's $4,204,403.
So nothing has changed since our budget session?
No, because nobody told me to reduce it. That's all you can do as a council at this point.
Do I have a motion for the first reading of ordinance 04-2022?
My name moved like title.
My to, title. Yeah, moved by Smith, by, for title only, a second is by Wilson, those in favor? Yeah, it's unanimous, please, sir.
Ordinance number 4-2022, ordinance for a resolution for appropriations and tax rates.
Okay, any discussion? Do I have a motion to suspend the rules now for second reading?
Also moved by Todd. Also moved by title.
Okay. Motion made by Goodman.
I don't fall for that one.
Seconded by Wilson, those in favor. Okay, all right.
Ordinance number 4-2022, ordinance for resolution for appropriations and tax rates.
Okay. Any discussion? I can around the block quite a bit. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules and have the third reading by title only?
I will read that motion.
Wow. Okay, motion by Goodman, seconded by Garrett, those in favor. Okay, third reading by title only.
Ordinance number 4-2022, ordinance for resolution for appropriations and tax rates.
Okay. Those in favor of acceptance of, well.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 4-2022.
Second.
Chase.
Goodman and Todd again.
That was Chase.
Oh, that was Chase. I'm sorry.
Your voice, Todd, I'm impressed.
I'm sorry.
Have a ventriloquist.
Yeah.
No, I'm impressed.
Todd, your lips never move. That was great. Those, okay, those accepting 04-2022 signify by raising your hand, and that's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we have a third ordinance, ordinance 05-2022, the 2023 salary ordinance. What's happening? Nothing?
I don't read the motion that we read ordinance 5-2022 by title only.
You don't like reading those ordinances, do you?
By title only.
Do I have a second? By title only. Okay, we got a.
Who seconded?
I did.
Chase, thank you.
It was either Chase or Todd. I'm not sure.
Well, I thought it was Chase, but you were talking and I couldn't hear you.
Can you listen?
Yeah.
I got you. I know, I know. Just give me, you guys down there. Okay, those in favor of the first reading of 04-2022, or 05-2022. Okay.
Ordinance number 5-2022, ordinance fixing the salaries for the employees of the city of Rochester, Indiana for the year 2023.
Okay. Any discussion? Do I have a motion to suspend the rules and have the second reading by title only?
Some of.
Motion made by Wilson, seconded by anybody?
Sure.
Oh, John Garrett will second that. Those in favor of reading by title only. Okay, unanimous. Second.
Ordinance number 5-2022, ordinance fixing the salaries for the employees of the city of Rochester, Indiana for the year 2023.
Okay. Any discussion? Budget session, again, this has been kicked around a lot. Any other discussion? Okay, would anybody care to move to suspend the rules and have the third reading by title only? I care to. Motion made by Goodman, seconded by Chase. Did I get that right?
He's sticking his head in.
Garrett?
No.
Wilson?
Yes.
One of them on this side made the motion. Wilson?
Was there a name?
Okay. Those in favor of reading by title only. Okay, unanimous.
Ordinance number 5-2022, ordinance fixing the salaries for the employees of the city of Rochester, Indiana for the year 2023.
I dare Ruth to make the vote.
Any discussion? Do I, okay, do I have a motion for accepting?
So move.
I think that was John Garrett. I heard her voice over there. The second is Ruth.
Okay.
Those in favor? Okay, so the motion has been made to accept ordinance 05-2022, those in favor of that motion. Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. Man, I'll tell you what, when these meetings get really long, we get a little slappy. Okay. Oh, that takes care of our ordinances. All right, department reports. Fire chief Butler.
Meeting for the month of August. Auto fire alarms, two in the city, structure fires, three in the city, one in Rochester Township, one in Richland Township, vehicle fires, one in the city, trash fires, two in the city, call for smoke, one in the city, accidents, five in Rochester Township, one in Richland Township, one in Union Township, entrapment, two in the city, trees and power lines, four in the city, one in Rochester Township, medical assists, 21 in the city, 17 in Rochester Township, two in Richland Township, one in Newcastle Township, gas leaks, one in the city, CO checks, one in the city, animal rescues, one in Rochester Township, service calls, two in the city, canceled calls, three, for a total of 74 calls we conducted one night of training. Pending your questions, that concludes my report.
Any questions for the chief? Thank you, chief. Chief shots?
For the month of August, we had 20 accidents, 19 warnings, 55 offenses, 38 case reports, 604 calls for service, 25 lockouts, three towed vehicles and 17 people incarcerated, and then there are crimes that those people were lodged for. Other than that, Brady Briggs is back from the academy. He's graduated. Bryce Michael is at the academy, and we made a conditional offer to Catherine Dyblin, who is our dispatcher. We made the conditional offer to her. She's already been to public safety medical for psychological and physical evaluations. I will have her results back within 10 days, and then as long as she passes everything, we'll get her uniforms ordered. I'm expecting a mid-November start date for her.
Great.
And that will bring us up to full staff.
Wow. Any questions for the chief?
But then we're short dispatchers.
Well, that was gonna be a question. Are you having any activity on the dispatchers?
We're accepting applications until the end of the month, and we'll see what happens. We'll do our best to try to get somebody hired until that. It's gonna be a few months of training.
Those of you who don't know, Catherine, she was a dispatcher for a year, right?
A year.
Not quite a year?
We hired her this year.
But she's always had aspirations to be a police officer, and she took the dispatcher job so she could learn everything she could about our department, including all the call signs, codes, everything. So she comes to us with a real jump on the programs. Yeah, very ambitious young lady. Anything else, chief? That's it. Thank you so much. Randy, stormwater.
We request the storm drain with the help of the water department on 8th Street and repaired the pipe. I've assisted the street department, and I have the asset management plan turned into LTAP that's been approved.
Okay. Okay, let's, let's just go right over to Dwayne. And Dwayne, as part of your presentation, would you explain to the council what we're doing with stormwater inlet situation, utilizing your truck that you've got now?
Right, we purchased a truck this year, utility truck, that has a crane mounted on it so we can lift our stormwater structures off the truck and get them placed where they need to be in the excavated area. It also has air compressor, has water, has everything so we can do all our work right there out of one truck. And so that's been, that's been very helpful with this. Makes it more efficient. We have everything all centralized. We also, besides the stormwater, we also helped with a sewer line on West Knight Street that was broken. We assisted the wastewater department on that one. We also had a sinkhole at 7th and Pontiac in front of the library that we had to repair. Our next project is gonna be in Mattawa Heights, at Rochester Boulevard and Lincoln Way. We have a stormwater structure that we need to replace there. It's an old, actually, it's the structure's out of brick, and we're going to take that out and replace it with a concrete structure.
Yeah, very good. I'm passing picture around one of the structures that you were replacing with cast cement.
Right.
And I'll tell you, pretty proud of these folks. They're going through and they're doing this work that I'm not too sure if you're going to go and get it far out there. And that's gonna, that's gonna warm your heart. See the PPE everybody's wearing? Boy, they look pretty professional. They're safe. So, you know, it's great. It's great that you're doing that. How many of these things are you finding that are brick?
Well, there's quite a few of them, actually. I don't have an exact number, but I think that was probably the normal way of doing business back in the day. So they're like that all over. I know, well, we had the one on 4th Street earlier that we fixed. We haven't replaced it yet, but the bricks are all broken down into the area, so there's not a lot of place for the water to get away. At some point in time, we'll replace, but it's still draining properly right now, so, you know, that's not a priority.
Yeah. It's gonna make some difference in our stormwater issues.
Right.
Very nice. Anything else?
The only other thing I wanted to brief is that we'll be starting our paving project for the city here in a couple of weeks. I think right now we're scheduled for the 10th of October to start milling streets and then paving on the 13th. I talked to Phil today. It looks like maybe because of some weather, that might get pushed back a couple of days, but it will be coming up soon. There's 13 different areas around town. Two primary ones is Gregory Farm Village and Sculvia Edition. We're gonna do both of those and get those up to shape, so they've got some nice streets there to drive on. And.
I meant to ask you.
Yes.
Part of my question with the list.
Yeah.
Was getting that information to out either newspaper, radio, RTC.
Right.
Because of getting vehicles moved, because of street parking, to help try to get that. So if we can get that coordinated, maybe this week?
I've got the list right here.
Perfect.
Good boy.
So unless you have any other questions, we're always on the move.
Pickleball court's all finished.
Pickleball court's finished.
Fence is up. Everything's done. Okay. Thanks, Dwayne.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, Derek.
You guys got my report. The top, top stuff's our normal basic stuff we do every day. The digs that were performed, we pothole and replaced the curb box at 608 Madison Street. The sewer department assisted with that with their vector. We repaired the fire hydrant at 2209 Poets Drive. It got hit. We cut out and lowered the curb box at the library. And then callouts that were performed. Chris Dowell was called out on the first at 6:30 PM, obviously to 2209 Poets Drive where the hydrant was hit. That was shut off and the repairs were made the next day. And then Randy Carr was called out on the 30th at 4:15 PM to West 4th Street and J Street for an emergency locate for a utility pool. Obviously, locates were coming in nonstop when that storm hit us, so. Other than that, the only other notes that I have is the Deer Run Estates project that we're doing out there, the water main extension. They have put already 600 and I want to say 30 feet of water main in the ground. They have one side of it connected. They're hooking up a hydrant tomorrow. And then I think the plan is Tuesday, the company will be here to insert two valves out on Besmore Park Road and 50 South. And then they just need to make a connection to that and then pressure test it and flow it and back to test it. And that, that part of the project will be completed, and then they will move to the other end of the subdivision and connect the two dead ends together.
Very good. I'm asking around, I'm sure right now, the water department and the street department collaborating to put that stormwater repair and replace that stormwater system on 8th Street in front of your building. And again, that's something a few years ago, I think we would have only contracted out our folks doing that. And that's, as a result, I'll send you that picture too, Wes. Very proud of you guys. You're doing some good, good stuff, and you're, and you're collaborating well.
So we're doing that on my street budget, by the way.
Yeah, yeah. You know, we.
Same bus, same bus, same bus.
It just stuckled my mouth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What are you talking to me for?
Because this whole folks in your court.
I know, I know. No, you're doing, you're doing good stuff. You're doing good stuff. And then again, this is stuff we would have had to farm out a few years ago. So, thank you very much. Any questions for Derek? Okay. Okay, we don't have anybody from downtown partnership. David's already spoken for the Lake Mano, you got anything else? Lake Manado Association?
Season's about over.
No.
I saw your boat leave, so I know it's about over.
It's gone. It said it's time to go bundle up for the winter. Okay, Ruth, very planning commission. Anything?
No meeting.
No meeting, okay.
Ken, if I can back up just a very quick comment. I appreciate the conversation on the golf carts, but it's clear that everybody wants the law. I mean, it's not like, I mean, everybody's here asking for restrictions on how to make it safe. So I think that's a positive that.
Steven?
I, you know, it was, it was mentioned that, you know, what we have now is not working, and everyone that was here tonight was bringing restrictions on their vehicles to make it safer. And I, so I, I think that's a real positive, that people had done homework and brought other ordinances that restricted the use.
Sure.
To make them safe. And I, I think that's a great compliment to those.
Well, the folks that were here tonight, and, and you're right. But again, it's like I told Gary, you know, these things are ordinances, laws, whatever, they're 10% of the people that are the ones you have to watch out for, the other ones who are gonna be the lawbreakers that will, will disturb the system.
I just wanted to say that. I didn't want Mr. Garrett to kind of drag in the meetings. We can go on now.
Thank you.
See how far back he sat? You can't reach that far.
I have to buy his house.
Notice he didn't stay on the front, because he can reach that. Okay, thanks, David. Goodman, Fed Hill?
Okay, so looking for a director. David alluded to the housing study that's underway. And Dan Holtz, his, his building is going in and locked it. He's expanding an existing business, and he's gonna end up with 18 to 20 jobs out there. He's planning on leasing half of that facility. It's a 20,000 foot, square foot facility, so he'll have 10,000 of it available to lease when it's done. We amended the bylaws and we're working on nominations now to fill the new district board seats. And finally, October 18th, there will be a social media training geared for small businesses and nonprofits. And there are still open spots.
Okay. Any questions for Goodman? Okay, redevelopment commission meets tomorrow. Heartboard, chief?
Yes, so in regards to golf maintenance, Anthony received some quotes from Midwest sheet metal, all raked in and cooling. And we're at a meeting in Coolin about air conditioning. They're gonna wait until December or January 23 to decide if it's most out right now. Received quotes from John Beer in Toro for agreeing their T mower. Quotes are for gas diesel hybrid. Anthony will ask about trade-in value for the current mower they have. So the board accepted the over $63,074 for 2715, that hybrid triplex mower with rumors, pending the trade-in value of the current machine. Adopt a green AJ would like to put a billboard for golfers to pick up a hole, and the first one will clean up ball markers on the hole. They signed up to four. They're gonna test this out and see how that goes. Cart paths, some trees are needing to be removed to help fix the cart path. Parts have been ordered for some of the cars that are currently in the shop that need repaired. The pool, pool is not closed for the season, and it's worth a total gross of $35,335. They only used about half of the chemicals they ordered for the year. Do need to add a change machine for the snack machines. Improvements were made to the baby pool. Privacy cover is up in the parking lot, was sealed and stripped. Splash pad is shut down for the season. Crew will break down in store for the winter. Again, pickleball court. The fence is up for the pickleball court. Gates are on order. The shower for the bow launch is ordered, will be put up next spring. Wendy's has some money left over from the splash pad and would like to create a wider area around it. Put up a fence and create one, a specific entrance. I think they're gonna, they're gonna speak with Wendy about that. And that is a.
Is it?
Yeah, they, they also voted to purchase 50 new golf carts. Well, pretty salty, around $300,000, but we're getting 2,200 a piece for our carts, which is a good price. So, what, the, it's gonna be about $100,000 wash for new carts. That's the good news. The bad news is, won't be able to get them for a year.
Wow.
Yeah. Isn't that amazing?
Might be able to drive them.
Yeah. Might be able to drive them. And we're a year, year away. That's, that's just crazy. The other thing too, the putting green, work has started on damping the putting green. All of the sod has been cut off and the preparation for the underlaying is being done. Probably be the spring before the, the new sod will be laid, but that has started also.
Any questions for Chase?
You have one more to ask?
Yeah, I forgot, that's why. I'm the world's worst note taker. Can't read my own notes. I wanted to bring in the council's attention, on the Blacketer project, there's been, it's been quoted $4,234 to run the sewer and the water laterals for the job, for the, anyone that locates out there to hook on. I know the county's gonna put in some of that. I was inquiring whether the city would be interested, would, would like to help with that, if we can find some, maybe some seed dollars to help with that.
How much?
The total is $40,234. And the county is, I don't know what they're gonna put in.
You're suggesting back to promotional.
Where are you going?
I told you, he doesn't have that much.
Yeah, I see how we cut it to 2500.
It's not being asked total, for the total amount. Is there a portion the county, the city would consider?
Is that something we need to decide tonight?
No, I think we need to decide.
Do they expect a little total to be covered, like for the county and the city, come on behind, to cover the whole cost?
Well, yeah, I mean, Fedco doesn't have any money in their budget to help with projects. So, it was asked of the, at the board meeting, you know, city and county both represented there, was asked if we would, want to help with that.
Is that something we could put on next month's agenda?
Asked by the, the builder? Asked by the owner of the property? That's who made the ask?
No, it's putting those in so then we, someone does buy the property, they can hook on.
Oh, okay. So, it would be like Fedco promoting business development.
If I can speak to it, this would be the laterals to take it under the road so that as the other lots develop, they don't have to cut the new road to get a lateral. So, this just really steps underneath the road to get access to, for the property owner would pick him up the property line.
Yeah, I propose we put it on next month's agenda. Look at it. Okay. And Shota can tell us if there's any money available in other funds.
Yeah. Okay.
I think that bus has come around. I think it is, I think it just came right back around.
Councilman Smith, BZA, council on aging.
Council on Aging, Matt, yesterday, I'll make this short, not a whole lot of things to report on. Doing some routine maintenance on the vehicles. RSVP is in training. I mentioned last month that they're training to be a by, a byde site for tax preparation. That training is this week, they're doing that. The big news is that in the month of August, did 2,280 trips, which is a gain of 700 over what was done in August and 21. So, obviously, the center is getting back and running more normal on what they've done. So, that's all good news there. BZA meets tomorrow night, unfortunately, my grandson has a football game and that's taking precedence over my attendee, but they've got three things on their agenda, one of which is old business, the church out by Blacketer is never required, they haven't been required to have sidewalks in and reviewed every five years, and that's up for review this year. And so, that's tomorrow night. And then, an addition on Barrett Road, which is pretty typical. But then, they do have a person asking for a variance on the city ordinance that pure blacktop is required in, in parking areas, and this guy wants to use some recycled asphalt material to do a parking lot. I believe it's...
Millings? Is that what he's saying? Millings?
We have millions.
Well, yeah, Millings. Is that what this guy's talking about?
That, that would be what, that, that term would be the same.
Same thing. Yeah.
So, that's on their agenda tomorrow night. Any questions? That's my report.
Any questions for Marty? Thanks, Marty. That's good to see the trips are increasing.
Yeah, it really is. And the, and the center is picking up in activity, attendance and luncheons.
Luncheons, Derek, great, great. Solid Waste and Animal Adoption Center, Todd?
Is that by title only?
Yeah, by title only.
So, we've...
Was that you or Chase?
I don't have a report for solid waste because I was unable to attend this one.
Okay.
But the animal center had a really interesting report. Chana put together some figures for just two months, July and August, most recently. They had 196 animals come in to the center and adopted out 240.
Oh, my gosh. That's great.
That's, yeah, that's up 30 respectively from last year on a move account. So, they're continuing to grow.
Yeah.
In fact, right now, they are at a two-week wait to receive new cats because they don't have room anymore for cats. But the average stay for cats is 33 days, average dog stay is 17 and a half. So, they're cycling them through pretty quickly.
Well, and it's pretty much become a no-kill center, right?
Yes, it is a no-kill center.
Wow. You know, what a difference a day makes, John remembers, I remember, Marty remembers when we didn't have that. We had a mess, you know?
And the board that's running that is just very committed, very energetic, doing a lot of fundraising projects. In fact, year-to-date, they're actually 11,000 down in terms of expenses versus income. But, based on Melinda's figures, they should end the year at 11,000 up. 11,000 in black with all the distributions and the fundraisers expected.
Good for them. Good for them. You know, they followed in the footsteps of a lady named Helen Gomer, a member who did it practically on her own. And when she was gone, we had terrible situation in town. So, they, they've done really, really good work, yes. Thank you, Todd. Any questions for Todd? Thank you, sir. John Waterboard?
Well, thanks to Derek, there's, the only thing I've got left to cover is the meeting ended at 5:40. Any questions?
You're getting better.
You're getting better. Derek, Derek was hoping you'd go that route.
I'm making most of your time.
No, very bad. You just, you just, you just moved John right out of his seat now. Very quickly, the project situation, Derek mentioned the Deer Run Estates Water Main Loop project. We're about half done with that, we started, what, a week ago? And we're about 50% done. So, that, that, that's moving right along. Mentioned the pickleball courts are all completed. The Minno Creek project, thanks to Dwayne back here and John Guyer from the county collaborated and finished that Minno Creek project up. And it is, we've got some pretty heavy rains and it's, it's working very, very well. So, that, that's done. We've got a delay on our Fourth Street drainage project. David, I know this won't be a shock to you, but to other people in the room, concrete and availability has gone crazy. Doubled in price, and that's if you can get it. So, that project has been delayed due to the concrete situation. Apache Drive, we'll be talking tomorrow more about it, Redevelopment Commission, but it is moving forward. We've got some really good news to talk about with that. The Ready Grant folks are still pondering what to, what to give Fulton County in regards to that project. Haven't crossed all the Ts that they've asked to be crossed yet, but we're working on it. One of the things is they'd like to know whether NDOT has approved the sidewalk project on 14th. And that is, that's huge, you gotta get their approval before you can go do that. So, that's one of the things we're doing. And they're being as nebulous as saying, okay, the project is $2 million, 33,000. We know that county and city are quoting up, quoting up a million, want a million from us. Who's gonna pay the 33,000? That's their question. Okay. We've reached out to the school and asked if they would support that in, and then there will be three of us who are engaged in making that happen. So, Janet is working on that. So, anyway, that's the kind of...
It's always the mayor's promotional budget.
Yeah, it's always the mayor's promotional budget. Yeah, I love it, I love it. So, that, that's happening there. Nickel Flank Trail, we'll have more information on that, but that is moving, moving forward. We've got, we've got some clearance and some plans to move that past the wetlands now. So, that's all good news.
And they really trying to run that from the southern edge of Indiana up to, all the way to the north?
That's what they, that's what they say. That's what they're telling us.
That's their goal.
And my comment has been, don't use the same engineering firm that ran our part of it into a wetlands, please. Yeah, yeah, yeah. By the way, that group's out of business now, so.
Is that right?
Yes, yes. So, anyway, we're, but we are working through that, we really are. The Redevelopment Commission's doing some good stuff, really are, Ruth, you and the group are doing some good stuff. Okay, nothing else other than to say one more thing. Those of you who, on the council who may be available on October the 20th at the Board of Works meeting, the board meeting will be taking, taken up honoring our lifeguard from the pool, Jake Freeman, who was on the tennis team and jumped into action, saved his cohort's life by instituting what he had learned as a lifeguard in doing the compressions and everything to keep, keep things going until EMS got there. So, we're gonna honor Jake on that day. So, if you're around, stop by. We'd love to hear from you. That's Thursday, that's our Board of Works meeting. Right now, we're, now we're kinda looking at an earlier meeting, right around 2 o'clock-ish.
2 o'clock?
Yeah, yeah. So, and, and I would mean a lot to you that some of the council stopped in. Okay, I would entertain...
Just, I'm not sure how many of the council members received an email, just, I'm, so y'all are aware, we are just completed our two-year audit 20 and 21. Some of you may have received an email from our examiner asking some questions, fiscal questions and things like that, or fraud if you suspect anything. So, it, it was not a spam email, it was legitimate email. So, but we have, they just wrapped up waiting on final management steps for approvals and then we'll be wrapping that up in the next few weeks completely. And so, everything looks good. We've got some changes to make, I'll be right to the council next month. I'm sorry?
What's the other name?
Our current, Julia Shaper.
Yeah, they've, they've really done a complimentary job, right? Pretty impressive, and added hard.
Yeah, so, and like I said, as with any audit, there's always gonna be some recommendations and things, so we're making some process changes, some of it will come to you guys next month. And that, it was good. I wasn't as stressed.
Well, you know, again, guys, Shota stresses over this stuff, but when I was telling Anna, party to any of it, you know, she's got it pretty well under control. And, and, you know, they had to admit, they go to a lot of places where they get the person who was the most popular when they were voted in, but they don't have a clue what's going on. They do a lot more instructing than they do audit. So, props to you, my dear. Good job, good job.
Thank you. You've taken age to be well, sir.
I got it, just take...
All right.
Do I have a motion for Jared?
All the way around.
Thank you.